Chair Bosscher, when you're ready.
Okay. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the November 8th, 2022 meeting of the City of Westminster Planning Commission. If anyone would like to speak and has not signed up, there is a sign-up sheet in the back of the room that you can put your name on. And at this time, I would like to have the roll call. Will the Secretary please call roll?
Chair Bosscher.
Here.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Excused.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Present.
Commissioner calling.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Excused.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Excused.
Commissioner Mayo.
Excused.
Commissioner Jong.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
And not excused.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Everyone will be voting tonight. We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 11th. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call on this, or it's just, okay, we need a roll call. If the Secretary will call roll.
I apologize, it's not a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those not in favor, say nay. Thank you.
It passes unanimously. Comments were accepted electronically and via voicemail and were delivered to the Planning Commission and posted to the Public Agenda Packet online prior to this meeting. Those who wish to give comments and have signed up in advance will be called upon in order to speak during the live meeting.
There's one item on the agenda this evening for public hearing. It's a public hearing in action on a request by Maria Posada for a variance of 19 feet from the 20-foot minimum rear setback requirement per 11-4-5 Westminster Municipal Code in the RA Zone District for a dwelling at 7201 Bryant Street to allow a 19-foot encroachment into the 20-foot minimum rear setback.
Thank you. I hereby open the public hearing for action on a request by Maria Posada for a variance of 19 feet from the 20-foot minimum setback requirement per 11-4-5 Westminster Municipal Code in the RA Zone District for a dwelling at 7201 Bryant Street to allow 19-foot encroachment into the 20-foot minimum rear setback. And I believe Patrick Caldwell is making the presentation tonight.
Slide one. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Caldwell. I'm a senior planner with the city's planning division. Next slide, please. As part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. Agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, and the public notices that were mailed, posted, and published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. Notices met the timing required for mailing, posting, and publishing. Notices of the public hearing were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the dwelling under consideration tonight. City has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Next slide, please. This is an aerial map of the proposed variance location. The dwelling at 7201 Bryant Street is a corner lot, frontage on Bryant Street and side access from a two-car attached garage on 72nd Avenue, which is an arterial street. At the rear, the lot shares a utility easement with 41 other lots in this block of the Vista Ridge subdivision. Next slide, please. This variance request seeks a variance to the 20-foot minimum rear setback requirement in the RA Zone District to allow an unpermitted garage addition to remain and encroach approximately 19 feet into the 20-foot rear setback at 7201 Bryant Street in Westminster. Westminster Code 1174C1 requires a minimum 19-foot-long parking space in front of the garage, and there is only 10 feet 9 inches from the face of the unpermitted garage to the curb of 72nd Avenue, which is an arterial street. Additionally, Westminster Code 11728 states that residential lots shall not obtain direct access from an arterial street. An unpermitted backout condition under the 72nd Avenue arterial is in place today. The curb is in the public right-of-way, and the design and slope of the curb was not reviewed for compliance with the city's standard specifications for design and construction as required in Westminster Code 1174C2 and also Westminster Code 1165 for compliance with federal ADA requirements. There's no record of city fees, taxes, or permits for the curb change or for the construction of the recent garage addition. Next slide, please. The unpermitted garage addition encroaches approximately four feet into an active and platted private five-foot utility easement at the rear of the lot and blocks full use of the easement by the other 41 lots that share the easement in this part of the Skyline Vista subdivision. Section 222E of the Westminster Code provides that the Planning Commission shall hear and decide variance requests. Section 228B, the Westminster Code specifies six criteria that are to be reviewed when considering a variance. Planning Commission may only grant a variance if it finds that all six criteria are appropriately addressed and satisfied; otherwise, the variance request must be denied. Section 228C of the Westminster Code provides that decisions of the Planning Commission are final, subject only to an appeal to district court. Next slide, please. 720 Bryant, excuse me, 7201 Bryant is shown, outlined in red. Existing two-car garage appears to be attached to the primary structure as of this time in this photo. Next slide, please. This photo shows the two-car garage attached to the house, making all the additions part of the primary structure, and that therefore created a 4-foot 10-inch encroachment of the two-car garage into the minimum 20-foot rear setback. Next slide, please. This is April 2009, street view of 7201 Bryant Street. The street view photo shows the flat-roofed connection between the house and the two-car garage. A wood fence parallel to the two-car garage door is in place and is painted with the same tan color as the house and the two-car garage. Next slide, please. This is a street view photo, and it shows the flat-roofed connection between the house and the two-car garage despite the permit application to add a pitched roof in 2009. A wood fence parallel to the garage is in place and is painted in this photo with the same white color as the house and two-car garage. Next slide, please. August of 2016, this street view photo shows a concrete pad that has been added to the left, which is west of the two-car garage, and a vehicle is parked at an angle on the new concrete pad. A wooden fence is in place, parallel to the two-car garage door, and it's painted a different color than the primary structure. It appears to be a white color. Curb on 72nd Avenue adjacent to the new concrete pad appears intact. In this photo, a pitched roof has been added to the formerly flat-roofed addition that connects the house to the two-car garage. Next slide, please. This is a November 2018 street view. This view shows that the wood fence parallel to the two-car garage remains in place and is now painted a darker color than the light brown color of the two-car garage house. Photo also shows that the curb adjacent to the concrete pad that was added in 2016 has been cut, removed, and a ramp provides an additional unpermitted backout onto 72nd Avenue, which is an arterial. City has no records to show that the curb removal was permitted in the city right-of-way, nor were fees or taxes paid for construction in a city right-of-way. Next slide, please. This is May of 2021. And this street view photo shows a vehicle parked on the concrete pad at an angle. A wood fence is still in place, parallel to the garage door, and is painted the darker color than the light brown color of the two-car garage and the house. Roof of a shed appears above the fence. Also shown in the photo is the unpermitted curb cut at 72nd Avenue, which is an arterial. Next slide, please. This is January 22, street view. This photo of January 22, 2022, shows the wood fence that parallels the two-car garage door remains in place. An attached carport addition is visible beyond the fence to the left, which is west of the existing two-car garage, but carport is not in use due to the fence. The roof of the attached carport appears to extend to the rear property line of 7201 Bryant Street. Also shown in the photo is the unpermitted curb cut at 72nd Avenue. Next slide, please. And this is a photo, February 22, stop work order for 7201 Bryant. This photo was taken in October of 2022, and the photo shows an enlargement of the stop work order that was posted in February on the wall of the unpermitted addition that faces 72nd Avenue. Next slide, please. And this is an October 2022, street view of 7201 Bryant. Shows that the fence that was parallel to the existing two-car garage has been removed, and an addition has been constructed and is attached to the existing two-car garage. This appears to be the enclosure of the carport that was photographed in January of 2022. Photo also shows vehicles in the unpermitted garage addition, vehicles on the parking pad and overhanging into the right-of-way of 72nd Avenue, which is an arterial. Also shown on the photo is the new unpermitted curb cut at 72nd Avenue. The stop work order for this unpermitted structure is posted on the narrow wall of the unpermitted addition. Next slide, please. This is a November 2022 photo of the unpermitted garage at the property line. This shows the proximity of the unpermitted garage addition to the adjacent lot at the west. The wall of the unpermitted garage butts the wing fence on the adjacent lot. Photo seems to show that the wall of the unpermitted garage addition is at the property line with no setback, or at most, two to three inches space between the unfinished wall and the fence. Next slide, please. And this is a photo of a survey submitted by the applicant. It's shown on the left. It does not label the distance from the west property line to the unpermitted addition. It appears to be no more than approximately three to four inches. Site plan submitted by the applicant, shown on the right, indicates the setback of unpermitted garage addition from the rear west property line to be 12 inches, but this does not match the survey in many respects. Next slide, please. This is the background and analysis of the code for variances. Criteria number one: The strict application of the provisions of Title 11 of this code would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship that is inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of this code. Staff does not find that the strict application of the provisions of Title 11 of this code would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship that is inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of code. There's an existing two-car attached garage at the rear of the existing primary structure, and that garage is constructed with an encroachment of about 4 feet 10 inches to the existing 20-foot rear setback. Applicant has not presented evidence in their application that there is a hardship with the property that would be solved by the unpermitted garage addition that encroaches 19 feet into the existing 20-foot rear setback and encroaches four feet into an active five-foot-wide flatted utility easement. For single-family detached dwellings, which is this at 7201 Bryant Street, the parking requirement per Westminster Code 1174B2A is for four spaces per unit with two spaces enclosed in a garage and two spaces in a driveway. There's an existing attached garage. The parking spaces for that existing two-car garage are at 10 feet 9 inches in length in the driveway and do not currently meet the city length standard of 19 feet. In the City of Westminster, there is no requirement for an additional garage beyond the two existing garage spaces that exist at 7201 Bryant Street. The unpermitted garage addition that's the subject of this variance does not provide a space in front of the garage that meets the city's minimum length parking requirement, nor does it correct the inadequate length parking space for the existing two-car attached garage. Next slide, please. This is criteria two and three. Criteria two: That there are unique physical circumstances or conditions such as irregularity, narrowness, or shallowness of the lot, or exceptional topographical or other physical conditions peculiar to the affected property. Staff does not find that there are unique physical circumstances or conditions such as irregularity, narrowness, or shallowness of the lot, or exceptional topographical or other physical conditions peculiar to the affected property. Lot features dimensions of approximately 100 feet by 62 feet. This is typical for the single-family homes in the Skyline Vista subdivision, and therefore not unique. Lot is neither narrow nor shallow. Lot's a corner lot, and in most subdivisions in the city, the minimum side setback next to a street is subject to a larger side setback than the interior side of the lot. Existing primary structure constructed in the 1950s does not meet the current minimum side setback, 15 feet on the corner, which is the south side of the existing structure. This is not the subject of the variance. Topography of the lot is not unique. Lot is generally level with minimal slopes on all sides. Garage could be placed in many locations without difficult slopes for access. Criteria three: These unusual circumstances or conditions do not exist throughout the neighborhood or district in which the property is located. Staff finds that these unusual circumstances or conditions do not exist throughout the neighborhood or the district in which the property is located. Staff's observation is that no other primary residential structures in the neighborhood encroach into utility easements, nor so much into the rear setback, that there are no unusual circumstances on the subject property to warrant this encroachment. Also, staff's observation is that none of the nearby lots have the primary structure facing onto the arterial of 72nd Avenue. Next slide, please. Criterion four: That because of such physical circumstances or conditions, the property not be reasonably developed in conformity with the provisions of the code. Staff finds that there are no unique physical circumstances or conditions to prevent development of the property in conformity with the provisions of this code. Staff's observation is that the subject property can be developed in conformity with the provisions of the code. Detached garages are considered accessory structures, and setbacks for accessory structures that are greater than 120 square feet in the RA Zone District per Westminster Code 11465B are a minimum of five feet at the side and rear of the lot. They may not encroach into any easements. Staff finds that an accessory structure for a detached garage can easily meet these setbacks in other locations on this lot. Physical circumstances and conditions on Lot 21 of, on this Lot 21 of the Vista Ridge subdivision are not unusual or different from most other lots in the subdivision. Many of the lots in the subdivision have detached garages located at the rear of the lot. Access to the structures is primarily from the front of the lot at the local street. Driveway along the side of the primary structure provides access to the detached garages at the rear of the lots on most of the lots. This lot in the Vista Ridge subdivision could have a detached garage in the rear of the lot with access from Bryant Street. The driveway would be located along the north side of the lot to access the detached garage at the rear of the lot. Criterion five: That the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the present or prior actions of the applicant. Staff finds that special conditions and circumstances are not present for this lot, or if they do exist, they are the result of present or prior actions of the applicant. Records indicate that the applicant purchased the dwelling in 2001. Records appear to show that the garage, that the two-car garage was attached to the home prior to its purchase by Maria Posada. Whenever this addition attaching the two-car garage to the home was constructed, made the two-car garage a part of the primary structure, and therefore created an estimated 4-foot 10-inch encroachment into the 20-foot minimum rear setback. Since then, applicant has constructed an unpermitted garage adjacent to the existing garage. This action has changed the conditions and circumstances that existed prior to the purchase of the property. Due to this unpermitted garage addition, whole primary structure now encroaches approximately 19 to 20 feet into the 20-foot rear setback, four to five feet into a flatted five-foot utility easement at the rear of the lot. The unpermitted curb cut on 72nd Avenue and Arterial Road for access to the garage addition is a result of actions of the applicant as well. Next slide, please. Criterion number six: That the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district in which the property is located, nor substantially or permanently impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent property. Staff finds that the variance, if granted, will substantially alter the essential character of the neighborhood in which the property is located, and the 19 to 20-foot encroachment of the garage into the 20-foot rear setback and into the five-foot utility easement at the rear of the lot will impair future development or redevelopment of some of the 41 lots that share use of the utility easement. The unpermitted addition causes the primary structure to be larger than other primary structures in the Vista Ridge subdivision and alters the character of the larger neighborhood. Excel Energy has commented that Public Service Company of Colorado owns and operates existing underground electric distribution facilities along the west property line in the area of the proposed garage. Public Service Company in Excel requests that this line be located and shown on the plan in relation to the garage. Additionally, the encroachment has been investigated by the Public Service Company right-of-way agent, and the encroachment has been denied. Public Service Company has stated that any damage done to the existing facilities would not be accounted for. would need to be repaired at the landowner's expense. Next slide, please. Staff recommendation. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to review the proposed variance. And staff recommends that planning commission deny the variance from the minimum 20-foot rear setback because the variance does not meet six of the six criteria required for a variance. Staff found no hardship, no lot irregularities, no unusual circumstances not present elsewhere, nothing to prevent reasonable development of the lot, no special conditions other than those that resulted from present or prior actions of the applicant. And if granted, the variance would impair appropriate use of adjacent property. Also note that the first alternative in the agenda memo would allow planning commission to deny the recent work, which added the unpermitted garage while approving the connection between the house and the garage that has been in place for 20 to 30 years or so. This alternative includes a condition that this connection be brought into compliance with building code safety requirements, obtaining all necessary permits within 30 days of this hearing, and final inspections. Both denial and approval motions also contain similar conditions. Later, including a survey, which certifies that the finished garage addition be no closer than the 12 inches shown in the variance application. Delays in complying with the conditions of the denial. Approval for this alternative would be subject to penalties for the Westminster Code. And next is the applicant presentation. The applicant is Maria Posada, the owner of the property at 7201 Bryant Street. Is the subject of this hearing for a variance. She's present, and she may wish to address the planning commission. Thanks for your attention. There are other staff members with us this evening. We would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thanks.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation? Okay. This would be the time for her to make the presentation.
Good evening to everyone. And I apologize for all of these inconveniences. I wasn't aware that all of this was going to happen. So the reason for me proceeding in the addition of this garage was I was in a very tense situation. There was attempts to stealing my car several times until finally my vehicle got stolen. And so we made a determination after suffering through all of these situations, along with my family, to go ahead and proceed with building a garage that would support and alleviate the thefts that were happening to our vehicles. And I was at a moment of when I was just very desperate. And as a resident of the city, I was not aware that I was going to have these consequences. I understand now that there are codes, and I do apologize for having altered. And so at this point, I'm here asking for a potential solution. And I'm not sure what that may be. One of my thoughts is maybe asking you to allow me to just keep things as they are, or I don't know, cut it somehow. I just, I don't know what the solution could potentially be. I've never been in these kinds of situations, so I'm not sure what else to say. I'm very nervous at this time, but I do have like the police reports. And I also tried calling Excel and Century to try to solve the problem. And that's what I was hearing also here in the presentation. And after the fact, after doing all of that, I thought that I was building it correctly, allowing those five feet for Excel and Century, and then also with the neighbor onto the side. And actually, I wasn't aware that my neighbor to the side was using that fence. I thought that that belonged to the property. And right now, I just find myself with that word. I know that I broke the code, and now I know that I broke the code, and I apologize for that. It's very difficult, the situation that we have. My husband and I are both cooks, and so we work really hard. And so it's really hard for us to keep getting our things stolen. And so we found that as a viable solution. And so when all of this was happening, I was fearing for all of that. And so I just acted alongside with my family, just kind of like finding an immediate solution to what was happening with our vehicles. And in fact, for us, it was really hard to even make that decision because like I said, we have very low salaries. And so it was really hard to come up with the money. And my family, because they do work in construction, they were the ones that kind of helped out. And I just bought some of the materials. And it was really, it was really hard for us. I am located in a high-traffic area, and I don't have any other words. I do apologize for all of this. Like I said, this was really out of desperation for what was happening with our families, especially with our low salaries. And I did try to do everything that Patrick suggested to try to resolve all of this. And I do want to thank him for assisting us with all of this. And that is all that I have to say. I hope that you take this into consideration when making your decision.
Thank you. Can the commissioners ask questions at this time? Okay, if anyone has questions for staff? Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first question is for Patrick. Thank you for helping her try to resolve. What, can you just kind of expound on what you did to help, to try to help her resolve these issues that you mentioned?
I sent her a lengthy, detailed email listing all the requirements for the public notice. And so that's really what I did. And she followed those instructions to a T. And there was an error on the sign, which she corrected, which we noted. She sent us a picture as soon as it was installed. And she made the correction immediately. And the art was the city's fault. They sent her inaccurate template. So she made the correction immediately, and she did the noticing 100% accurately. So that's essentially what I did was, you know, monitor that.
Okay. Well, thank you for expounding on that. I appreciate that. Secondly, the original garage, that was, from your photo presentation, we believe that was there prior to the applicant purchasing this property.
That's what we believe, and the photo from 1992 indicates that. And if you look at that photo closely, the reason we think the flat-roofed addition connected the main house to the two-car garage was in place. If you check the shadows, they don't match. Look at all the other, you know, in that photo, if you look at the other dwellings and how the roof provides a shadow, there is no shadow on the flat roof. So that wouldn't, if it was a patio and it was just concrete, there would be a shadow. And so we have photos of the street view showing it with a flat roof in 2001. Our assumption is that it was there when they purchased the dwelling.
And therefore, it looks like the curb cut for that original garage was also there at that time?
We assume that also because in the 2001 photo, it appears. If you look really, really, really closely.
Yeah. I know, I'm squinting. My eyes aren't quite as good as they used to be. And just to clarify, what we're calling the survey here is just an improvement location certificate, not a true boundary survey. So therefore, we would, therefore, you're requesting that they do, or part of the, part of the, if we did approve a variance, you would have us do a, or have them make them do a boundary survey to make sure whatever encroachments that we may or may not permit would be accurate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, just wanted to point that out there. Yeah, those were basically my big questions about it so far.
Commissioner calling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Patrick, the question I have has to do with that garage that they built recently, the one that's now being built. Wasn't that caught when they got their building permit, or they just didn't get a building permit?
They did not obtain a building permit. The city does not have a record of any permits or fees paid for this garage addition.
Okay. Okay. I was just concerned when I was hearing all this. You know, building permits is kind of important, just for electrical reasons, all kinds of reasons. But backing onto 72nd right there is really dangerous. So that concerned me also about that. And if that existing garage, when they purchased it, already backed onto 72nd, that was never caught at some point by any inspectors or code enforcement to notice that there was a garage that... I mean, isn't backing onto 72nd part of what you said was not allowed onto an arterial?
It is not allowed. There is a number of older parts of town where there is a back-out condition onto an arterial residential use with a back-out condition onto residential, excuse me, from a residential property. We did not go back and research those to see when they were done. We do not allow them, and we do monitor that these days. And if they had come in for a permit, we would have noted that it was on an arterial, and we wouldn't allow a back-out condition. One of the, occasionally, there is enough room to do what I call a back-out on the lot. So it's kind of where you, you know, you pull in and you can sort of back out and then pull forward. So you're aimed straight, and we have allowed that in a couple of places. And in our newer subdivisions, where there are collector or arterial streets with residences fronting on them, what we've done, and we've added that they have little loops, and then the homes front on those. Huntington Trails Parkway and Ranch Reserve Parkway are examples in the last 20 years where we have not allowed residential units to back onto a collector street. And those little loops have been installed, and therefore they still front on the Parkway.
But that's not really the case.
That's not the case here. I'm just pointing out.
No, I just wanted to understand.
Some examples of new subdivisions where we are aware and we do pay attention.
What about, oh, go ahead, were you gonna say something? No, were you gonna say something? You were leaning forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, if I can, I'd like to add a little bit to that because as we kind of go backwards in time here, it gets fuzzier and fuzzier. And so, you know, conditions, as you can imagine, could have changed quite a bit since the 1950s when the house was built. So, for example, back then, 72nd Avenue might have been a two-lane road. And that garage could have been originally facing 72nd, just like it is now, but at a much greater distance. Those are the kind of things that we don't really know. And so we're really, some of this is speculation about how it got here.
Right.
To the best of our abilities, we tried to flesh that out for you all.
That helps a lot.
With the information that we could find. But, you know, we could assume, we can assume probably a good bit of change has happened since the house was originally constructed and over those decades.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And it helps to see the progression over time, so to understand that. But my other question was, by adding the second additional garage, you know, there's the existing garage and adding to the garage, does that make the backing out onto 72nd more dangerous or less dangerous, would you say? I mean, is there a way to, I mean, is it, I don't know if there's a way to...
It's the same distance. So they're not, as far as we can tell, they're not closer to the right-of-way or the sidewalk there. So they're probably not more dangerous than the original garage.
And that helps. And then my other question had to do with that easement. So we're building a building over a utility easement, encroaching four feet into a five-foot utility, private utility easement. Is there a safety issue associated with that? Or is it just a matter that if something goes wrong, they have to dig it up? The building has to come down? Or, so I understand what the implication is. I've always been under the impression you just don't build into a utility easement for reasons of safety. But maybe that's not the case.
That's my assumption also. And we don't have any information on the utility easement as to what kind of line is in there. They included in the, is it attachment? The information from Excel Energy, they did not state what utility might be in that easement. So I'm not sure. But if there is, you know, if it's a gas line, I don't know if that's a gas line, if it's an electric line, if it's a cable TV line. But the purpose of the utility easement is for easements. The other thing I just want to clarify is that it's a private easement. It is not a city easement. So typically, the city has not enforced encroachments into private utility easements.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's just mostly in there as an FYI to say, you know, please be aware that this is not common. And if we, if it come in for a building permit, we would have reviewed that. And if five feet was the setback, we would have, or, you know, zero was the setback, we would have said, you still can't build into the easement.
And that utility easement, the private utility easement, is not just for that lot. It serves the whole subdivision. You say 41 homes have utilities that come down that easement. So it's not just this lot that's affecting, it's the whole subdivision.
And the slide that showed the vicinity, you could see the north to south, all the dwellings that back up to that utility line. south, all the dwellings that back up to that utility line, or utility easement, excuse me.
Thank you. That was all I had.
Commissioner Jung?
Yes. So Patrick, I have a few questions. One, just to clarify what Commissioner Collins asked. So if there was a possibility to do that loop that you were talking about, um, it, it's possible, but does this property have that ability to do that?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Generally, the loop requires an access and, onto and off the arterial. So the, I, I don't believe there's enough depth there for.
Okay.
It's 10 feet, nine inches to the existing dwelling. I don't see that as.
Okay. So that's not an option. Okay. The second question kind of alludes back to what, what Commissioner Collins said about the safety of, on the garage in the, in the backdrop. Does the city know or have any data? I'm, I'm, I'm aware that it's a safety concern. I also want to know, is there any accidents with that house and traffic?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
But I didn't check the, you know, accident reports for.
Is there a way for staff to find that? John?
There is. We'd have to consult our transportation engineer.
Okay.
He's not with us tonight, so that would be something we'd have to follow up with.
Follow up. Would it be okay to make, would that delay any, anything here, or we make that request?
Well, I'll, I'll refer that question to Mr. Graham about.
If I understand what you're asking, Commissioner, it doesn't sound like that, that, like that information could be available tonight. And the only way that that could weigh into your decision, to the extent that it's relevant, would be to continue this hearing.
Okay.
To a date certain, to have everybody come back.
I guess a question I have for you is, uh, information, would that be considered relevant for this variance or not?
Well, I apologize. I'm, I can't tell you what you should consider to be relevant or not to whether, you know, the, the criteria have been met for variance, for granting a variance.
Okay. I'm gonna have to sit on this, kind of ponder it. My, my next question, in, in terms of the packet that was sent to the commissioners, I know this, was there a picture that staff presented that was not in the packet? Uh, because I'm, I was looking through the pa, my packet, or at least, um, and I, I think there was a picture that was presented by staff that showed the second garage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is, um, was that just pre to this meeting only, or was it supposed to be on a packet that was made public?
I thought that there was a photo of the garage in the packet, but I spent a long time, and those photos have gone through a lot of revision.
Yeah. The picture with the S SUV is not in the packet.
Oh, I thought it was originally, so I apologize for.
So I'm gonna assume that may have been a later edit to the presentation after the packets were distributed. Is that a possibility?
Yeah. The packet was distributed on Thursday. The actual, the public posting packet online was done on Thursday, and the PowerPoint presentation was finished up today. So it could have been added to the PowerPoint after the packet was already posted to the public.
Okay. Um, yes, that, that was, that answered my question. The, the next question I have, I guess, um, is to, I guess, both staff and applicant. So with Excel Energy's response and Public Service Company of Colorado's response, is the applicant aware that they are liable for any damages or that may take place if Excel or Public Services, the Public Service Company, has to repair anything?
I, I would like for the applicant, applicant to confirm their understanding of Excel's communication. I didn't get the impression that there was a clear understanding based on the statements.
So this question is for the applicant. Given the response from Excel Energy and the Public Service Company of Colorado in their review, or permit review, are you aware that if there's any damages done to their, their underground property, you are liable for it?
Before the applicant responds, could we have the applicant at the podium to speak into the microphone, please?
I guess, to repeat my question for you, given the response from the Excel Energy Company and the Public Service Company of Colorado in their review of the permitting, are you aware that you are liable for any damages or repairs that need to be taken care of?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, so you're, you are completely aware that you are responsible and liable for it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry. I just have a ton of questions. And, um, this question, I guess, will go staff. Yeah. So in the packet, um, with responses from the community members, there was pictures submitted, um, I think this would be, this is in the packet, this would be, at least on my page, would be page 44. The page number on papers too, but on the PDF, it's 40, page 44. It shows, I, I would assume is a new garage. Also, search, um, there's a picture of a reddish fence that's, appears to be damaged or pushed back. This, I, the question I have for you, Patrick, is that damage caused from their construction of the garage?
Um, I don't, I'm not sure. I, it just was a photo of the existing condition, so I don't know when that fence damage occurred.
Okay. And then this is their, their, their garage though, right?
This is, if you look, there's a little bit of yellow in this photo.
Uh huh.
And if you kind of follow, if you look really closely, that is actually the sidewall of the garage. That, it is on the neighbor's, you know, adjacent to the.
Okay. The sidewall. Okay. So, so it appears damages were done to the neighbor's sidewall.
This is the, the, the addition of the garage, is what you're seeing in the photo.
Okay.
The view in the photo is very close to the southwest corner of the garage.
Okay.
Which would be very close to that southwest corner of the lot.
Okay.
And, uh, and you're looking north, and, uh, the yellow looks like, uh, insulation or, or, uh, some type of, uh, underlayment.
Uh huh.
And, uh, and you can just see that wall kind of moving northward on that, on the right side, and the fence coming into that wall at a 90-degree angle.
Uh huh.
Running east-west.
Okay.
Or west-east.
And, and that fence is kind of a wing fence for the house next door. House next door is at an angle on its lot.
Okay.
And so this kind of, even though it's not at the front of the lot, this kind of is the wing fence, and it's actually prevents, um, it, it closes off the backyard. It's, it's just an odd alignment of the, the house next door, and this is the wing fence on that one.
Okay. It, it appears the applicant wanted to respond. Is she okay to respond to whether, yeah?
I would like to clarify that issue with that fence. So that, that fence belongs to my property, uh, and that is the angle where Century and Excel were located. When I purchased that home. When I purchased that house, the neighbor had, um, that area fenced off, the, the angle where Century and Excel's, and then his property, uh, his fence, and then my fence. So later that house was sold, and then the new property owner then took over that angle. And that person does not have their own fence. They're actually, they were using my fence, my area. So she clo, she took off, the, the new property owner took off the, the fence that protected that angle, and so that, that only leaves that, that area in the front. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. That is all of the questions I have for right now.
Okay. In that case, I will open the public testimony. Public testimony has been received in the form of emails and voicemails, and will be played. Do we have any emails or voicemails?
No emails, uh, that were not already included in your original packet from last Thursday, and no voicemails had come in since the original packet was posted either.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on the signup sheet to speak?
I forgot to check. Just a minute. Hope I said that right.
I'm the neighbor to the west, and, um, as she was just saying that, that fence is hers, um, actually, if you go back to that, um, slide that you just had up, the fence that runs along the side of their, um, new garage addition is less than two inches from that fence. And the fence that borders our property is hers, but the wing fence is on my property. So literally, that garage is less than two inches from that fence. I sent a picture in of that, and I didn't see that in the presentation. When I bought this property, there was that garage, and then they had put that carport on, and the carport was fine. I was fine with the carport. However, this new addition is so tall, it has shaded my whole backyard where that is at, because that's only like, not even 15 feet from my house. And so that little area, that's my side yard where my dogs, you know, enjoy my, I have a very small backyard because of the way my house is allotted. You know, it's at a kind of an angle. So I have a bigger front yard than my backyard. So that backyard is kind of part of what my dogs enjoy, what I enjoy, and so it impacts my property. And I, their easement or, um, concrete pad actually covers also the utility easement that they built without a permit. So it seems like they keep putting in things that they do not have a permit for, and then ask, you know, or, you know, I guess, variances later. So I feel like that fence that is shown in that picture, that is my fence, not their fence, as I put it up, and it, you know, it's properly installed. So if you see the red-red, that's the painted part, that's theirs. The faded, weathered wood that's not painted, that's mine. And then that little side yard, like, right, that's kind of in that picture, that's my property. And it's less than like two inches literally away from my property. And this will affect my value of my property going forward and how it's seen, because when I purchased the property, that wasn't there. So I don't support that. I mean, I was fine with the carport. I didn't have any trouble with that.
Thank you.
Chair Boshier?
Um, I understand from staff remotely that, um, her pictures are on page 11 and 12 of Attachment 7, the pictures that she referenced.
Okay. Thank you. Next up for speaking?
The only other speaker was the applicant, Maria Pazada, so I, I, I believe she's spoken.
Okay. At this time, I will close the public testimony and offer the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, and that also includes staff, if they wish to make a rebuttal. And at this time, we will entertain more questions as well. Patrick, did you have any rebuttal?
I don't have any at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
that was there was removed, and that was not actually her fence. Maybe you guys can go back and look at that. That was the, the part where that Excel and the other services were because her fence is not supposed to be next to mine. And once again, apologies for the inconvenience.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Seeing none, I will call for the question, or actually, I will call for a motion on this application. Commissioner calling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to deny the variance request for the garage addition to encroach into the 20-foot rear setback for primary structure.
Do we have a second?
I will second for purposes of discussion.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, this is a tough case, for sure. I have no doubt that, well, I'm going to oppose the motion that I second. I'm just gonna say that, because. to say that, because I believe, I have no doubt that the original garage that we talked about is, could be original even, uh, it's been there, we know it's been there longer than the applicant, and probably back, like, uh, Mr. McConnell said, probably back to when it was a two-lane road on 72nd. So I think that is a hard, would be, cause a very big hardship if we're condemning houses just because we don't have good records passed 20 years ago. Um, I'm, I'm torn about the other one, because when we're, you know, when, when you're building that close to a power line, it's dangerous, and, you know, I don't, Excel, if they ever have to get in there and maintain it, they would be destroying your garage, and then making you pay for the demolition in order to do their maintenance on it. That's the, that's the problem when you've got it running, according to Excel's email in our packet, it's in the footers of, or next, right next to the footer of your new So, that's, that's tough. The other thing, um, that I, that I see is, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I, I can't imagine what it's like to have your stuff attacked and stolen, that's just, that's, that's wrong, and I'm sorry, I'm super sorry that that's happening to you, because I want all Westminster to be safe, and, you know, my neighborhood, I can leave my garage open and nobody takes my stuff, and they should, nobody should be taking your stuff either, you're in the same city that I'm in. That's, I'm, that's just wrong. Um, and, I don't know, I'm, I'm going to, to get to the point of this motion, I am voting against the first motion, but I, those are my, my comments, and kind of where I'm leaning right this second, uh, from a legal standpoint.
Commissioner Jean.
Um, so I am also conflicted with this motion, but first, and I want to echo, yes, I'm sorry that your property was damaged and stolen, that, as my colleagues have referenced, that's not acceptable, and, and these are things that the city should be proactively addressing. Um, and also to second what my colleague just said, um, I'm concerned, though, with the new attachment, and what Excel provided and information to us, that if there is any repairs that need to take place, you're going to be liable, and you will have to pay for it, from the maintenance, destruction, and such forth, and that kind of sucks. Um, I, I understand that your intent was to protect your property, I think that's a noble intent, but, um, there are, there are rules and policies that you also have to adhere to, that's been established by the city, um, and so, I'm kind of torn right now, and that's kind of where I'm at.
Commissioner calling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I want to also lend my sympathy to the applicant, I do sympathize with you, I apologize, there's nothing worse than having things stolen, and I really feel bad for that situation, and I, I hope that there's another solution, it sounds like there could be, um, to put a garage on the back of your property and enter it from the other side of your home. My bigger concern is that someone's going to get hurt backing out of your garage, onto a street that 72nd that just continues to get busier and busier, or that something associated with that utility line is going to cause some kind of a hazard that will start your house on fire, and then the fence on fire, and will go on and on. So I just, we have rules in the city for a reason, um, you get a building permit, and you have an inspection done to make sure you're up to code, and that you're doing things very safely, and so you don't, you don't build something that's not to code. Um, I, I have a hard time approving this, because it's, there's so many ways that it doesn't meet the code, it's just wrong. Um, I, it doesn't mean I don't sympathize with you, and I'm sorry that that happened, but, um, you know, the, the other thing about this is, is you're not the only one that lives in this neighborhood, other people do, and you're impacting your neighbors, and you know, shadows into other people's properties, and not having sunlight when they have small backyards, that kind of thing is important too, so you have a need, and everybody has a need, but we all need to work together to come to a solution that works for you and for your neighbors, and also meets the city code. So unfortunately, I have a hard time agreeing to allow you to encroach, if, if the variance request would have come before us, and it was, you know, up to the utility easement, um, you know, so that it was a five-foot offset, then I would absolutely try to consider that, but then again, I would be questioning the whole backing onto 72nd, which is continuing to be a busier and busier street, and I worry for your safety backing onto that street. So I, I stand by my motion, and I, I apologize that you've had, been forced into this situation, but I don't think this was the right answer. Um, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I have a question for staff. If this motion to deny passes, does the applicant have to remove both structures?
Those staff provided some alternative motions.
Right, but I'm just talking about this, the very first one, what happens with that?
The very first one should allow you, if you choose to agree to that motion, uh, it would require the removal of the most recent garage encroachment, but it would allow them to keep the, uh, original connection between the house and detached garage, which in fact created the original setback encroachment. So it's this cumulative set of circumstances that's happened over the years. The, um, the first setback encroachment was created when they took a detached, not, not the Pazadas, but the previous owner took a, took the detached garage and connected it to the house. The detached garage, being an accessory structure, had a shallower setback, going connected to the house, it all of a sudden became a part of the primary structure, that was, that predates them. And so that alternative motion, if you approve that, would still require, would still deny the most recent, um, setback encroachment, but it would allow them to keep the connection, and basically approve the original setback encroachment.
Okay, so if we approve this current motion, they will get to keep the original garage, or not?
The, the current motion, they would have to remove both. The alternative motion seems to be more in line with maybe where your conversation is going.
Just to clarify, the alternative motion would be number two on the docket that we, that the commissioners see, correct?
I don't, I don't have it, let me borrow.
Chair Boshier. If I may.
Sure.
Um, if the, if the commission is considering, um, if a majority of the commission is considering an alternative motion, um, the proper way to address that would be to rescind the original motion, to deny. That has to be, uh, okay with the motion maker and person who made the second, Chair Car, uh, Commissioner Carpenter, for the purpose of, um, bringing up another motion, because if you vote on the motion before you, and it is approved, then everything is denied.
Right, but if we vote to not approve.
Correct.
Then this would fail, and we could do the next motion, is that correct?
That's correct as well.
Or you can rescind, so we've got two options.
Yes.
So Commissioner calling.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to rescind my previous motion.
Okay, and the second has to agree.
I, I agree to rescind the motion.
Okay, so now we need another motion.
May I make a new motion?
Sure.
Commissioner calling, before you make your motion, would it be helpful if, if I maybe tried to summarize the alternatives?
That would be fabulous.
I know, I know this, this got very complicated, so, um, I think you understand the second alternative. Basically, that would deny the most recent addition, but allow them to keep the connection between the house and the garage, like it was when they purchased the house. We added one caveat to that, is that connection has never been permitted or inspected, we're not sure if it meets code or is safe, and so we would want them to seek the, and obtain a permit, and have that inspected, and correct any safety issues for that connection. Um, as noted in the presentation, it looks like when it was originally purchased, it had a flat roof, um, that roof line was modified, uh, maybe for the better, and, uh, so it'd be good to get that permitted, inspected, and make sure that's safe. And so that, motion two would accommodate that. Motion three is if you were inclined to grant them, uh, the variance to cover everything that has happened out there. Uh, and of course, that, we would recommend also conditioning that on getting the proper permits and inspections.
Okay, so could we add the requirement, or an inspection and a permit, to the second motion? Because I don't want to just leave it up to them to come and get it from you, I want it to be a requirement.
Our recommendation to you on the second and third alternatives is that they secure the required permits and inspections within a reasonable amount of time.
Okay.
Do you have a question? Um, so on the dockets, the PDF form, where staff provides the policy issues and alternatives, 30 days was listed, um, for whether to receive a per, permit, um, to, um, either fix or deconstruct the, um, the item being discussed, is 30, 30 days what city defines as like reasonable amount of time?
With our discussions internally with our building folks and our enforcement folks, uh, we thought 30 days was a reasonable timeframe for them just to secure the permit.
Okay, so that's just to secure the permit, outside of that action of securing, paying for the permit, or whatever's needed, so that's it, correct?
So obtaining, the way we've got it written here is obtaining appropriate construction slash demolition permits, and paying associated fees within 30 days of the decision.
Okay.
And, uh, and then completing the associated inspections. I think, I think really just securing the permit, and then beginning the process of getting those inspections within 30 days, uh, understanding that for a lot of reasons, the inspections might not occur within 30 days, uh, but just getting that process started, and, uh, making sure that, uh, that they follow through with it.
Okay. Do we need to add that language to the motion, or will that be implied because of your documentation?
Uh, I, I think the motion could carry as it's written, uh, I just, out of caution, um, maybe refer to as specified in the staff agenda.
Okay.
Uh, it, the way the motion is drafted, it's kind of general, it just says, be brought into compliance with building safety.
Actually, actually, it does, I'm sorry, it does reference the first alternative, so I think it's written.
Okay, so it's good as is.
My fault.
Okay, so let's entertain a motion here.
Chair Boshier, I do have a question for my colleague, Commissioner Paulings. I know you had referenced that safety was concerned on 72nd, um, that was also a concern of mine, um, it appears that requesting a traffic report is a possibility, but that would be up to me or anyone here, um, is that still a pending issue for you?
So it's not a pending issue for me, because a traffic report is only going to look backwards and tell you what accidents have happened.
Uh-huh.
Um, I'm concerned about as 72nd gets more congested and more traffic, and the city gets busier.
Okay.
That, that future accidents could happen, so I'm confident that it's insecure, that it's not secure right now, that it's not a safe condition right now.
Okay.
And regardless of this decision, like, one of those garages is staying, and they'll continue to have a safety issue. I worry about that.
Okay.
But I don't think there's anything we could do about that tonight, because we're just talking about a variance for that addition.
Okay.
So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answered. Rush.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a couple of things, uh, I would suggest, uh, I, I also echo your safety concern, but I would suggest, the, with the additional concrete that's in front of the garages, they can, it actually has made it safer for them, because they could actually back out, back, or back out and, and do that angle thing a little bit more, so they're kind of able to back out and kind of head in, head on versus before, so that extra concrete that's in the utility easement is actually, probably a good thing for safety, I would assert. Uh, the second thing, uh, I'm going back to a couple of the exhibits, uh, 15 isn't, page 15 of the thing has an aerial, but I think it's 31, 32, it looks like there's a lot of outbuildings along that utility easement that encroach, uh, I'm looking especially like, uh, 7210, uh, Kenosa, 7240 Kenosa, 7250 Kenosa, 7270 Kenosa, looks like it's a garage that almost, that's 50 and 70 both look like they have garages there in that easement, uh, and 7210 as well, um, there's.
You're, you are correct, there are other, there are encroachments into that easement with other structures, but none of the other structures are habitable, or are attached to the primary living space, so they're all freestanding, either accessory structures, and they are probably date from the time of this existing two-car garage at 7201 Bryant, when things were not checked as closely, um, and we don't have a history of those, or a record that we can find of those, any permits for those structures.
Got it. So the concern then, more so, well, besides the fact that the setbacks changed because of the accessory building versus a, a primary structure, but the real concern is that the, because it is a garage attached to a primary structure, having the proper firewalls installed, so if there was an electrical problem, or something happened there, there wouldn't spread to the rest of the house, is that, uh, is that what I'm getting at? Is that what you're getting at?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Got it, all right.
Okay, I have another concern, and that is the fact that the, the other encroachments that you note are very minor compared to a concrete pad covering an easement. So I must say that I think, not only does the structure have to come down, but that concrete has to be removed so the easement can be accessed. There's just no, that easement affects 41 other homes, and, uh, so it may not have to be removed, the full width, but at least four and a half feet of it has to be removed so that easement can be accessed, and, um, I think that should be included in any variance that is given to this applicant.
Commissioner Boshier, the city typically allows flat work, such as driveways and patios, to encroach into utility easements, um, and then it's the, when, if there is a need to dig that up, the applicant, or the owner does need, it's, it's on them to replace it, but we do allow flat work, we do not allow structures.
Okay, all right, as long as the city has a guideline on that, that's good with me. Okay, we are ready to entertain a motion?
One second, this is for the applicants, uh, do you understand what we just talked about with the, the poachment and easements, that?
What I'm kind of confused on is like, uh, you know, the conversation you were having about the removal of the first, and then the second, uh, potentially the second garage, because that's, the first garage was Because that's, the first garage was already there. So I understand the concern about the, the additional, the one that I brought up, but not necessarily the one that was already, you know, part of the property when I purchased it. So what I also want to say is like, I purchased the home in 2001. And so I know that you're concerned about safety on 72nd, but that's not my fault. It is not my fault that things have changed since I purchased the home until now that there's more traffic. You know, that, that's not my fault. And so I feel that I'm being penalized because of that.
Well, let me express what's happening here. We are proposing that you take down the new garage, but you get to keep the old garage as long as it meets city safety codes.
But that was already there when I purchased the home.
Yes, but it has to meet safety codes.
Okay, if you want to check it, and I'll make the upgrades that is needed, I guess.
That's what we're proposing.
But yeah, and I understand that, but I was confused about the other.
No, the proposal we're considering would require you to take down the new garage.
Chair Boschert, may, may I ask a question? Just to clarify your, your statements there. What, what Chair Boschert is talking about is that after you purchased the house, at least from the imagery that we got from Google, there was a pitched roof added to the connection between the original house and the detached garage. It was not there when you purchased it. It looked like the roof was flat and then someone added a pitched roof in the years after you had purchased the house. We don't have a record of permitting that, and those could be safety issues. And so the condition would be that the work that you did after you purchased the house would need to be permitted and inspected.
I, I did understand all of that.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner calling.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move to deny the most recent garage addition, which encroaches into the rear setback for the primary structure, and approve only the encroachment of the original garage and connection to the original house, with the condition that the earlier connection be brought into compliance with building and safety code requirements as stated in the first alternative, alternative in the agenda memo.
Ms. Posada has a question, I think. Is that allowed?
So if it's a concern about the roof and the peak, I do have a permit for that. I have the roofing contract because they were the ones that took care of all of that.
Yes, the city has a record of a permit being applied for, but no inspections were ever done and the permit was not closed out.
But that was, that was, I mean, I paid for that, so that should have been something that the contractor should have done.
Possibly so. Your contractor, it, it may have been the contractor's responsibility on your behalf to call in an inspection and have it done. That was not done. That responsibility still falls to the property owner though. Yeah. So. Yeah, absolutely. So the city is just asking you to, as the property owner, follow through with the inspections on that. And, and, and I'll add that that permitting and inspections is not intended to be a burden on a property owner. It protects a property owner's safety. I can tell you that I've been the victim before of a contractor that did not do the work according to code. And because I got a permit and the inspector came out and inspected, they caught that. And my inspector, in my case, actually confirmed that the work that the contractor did could have been a fire hazard that burned my house down. So I was very thankful to get that inspection done because it protected me. And, and that's the reason why we want to make sure that you follow through or your contractor follows through with the inspections on that to make sure the work is safe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can we get a motion going here? Okay, we need a second. Commissioner Zhang.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in front of us. Do we have any discussion on this?
Joe, it sounds like there's something you'd like to read to us.
Well, like I said, we, we, we've done a lot of digging on this, and I think Patrick was bringing to my attention that I should clarify in regards to the flat roof. So it looks like in October of 15th, 2009, there was a failed inspection notice. The existing flat roof section is over habitable space being used in the bedroom. There's no record of the original construction of this flat-roofed area. Building Inspector Frank Shaw met with the owner and looked at the existing construction. Problems were discovered with the framing of the roof and that the ceiling joists were connected to the house, rafter tails on one side and are also overspanned. Chief Building Official Dave Horace would require the flat roof framing be redone to provide proper load transfer in adequate span, then tapered insulation and roof membrane installed and a reinspection. And then the note here is expiration notice to owner. The permit has not passed final inspection and is about to expire. If we do not receive a response to this notice within 15 days, the permit will be removed from our active database and placed in the archive files unapproved project. So if I'm reading this correctly, it sounds like Ms. Posada's testimony, they did apply for a permit, but it never passed inspection and then there was no more contact. And so the permit's technically expired. They need to renew that, get the inspections done, and just follow through with what was started.
Right. Thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question.
Chair Boschert, one of our staff at home, the building inspection supervisor, Mike Jones, would like to speak.
Okay.
Mike, you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself and, and go ahead and speak.
Right, you guys don't need to see me, right?
No, we're good, Mike, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me a second. To that last issue concerning the flat roof and the new pitched roof, I'll take that responsibility on to help them get through that process to make sure we bring that up to a, a safety standard that's good for them as well as meets our code. So we'll get that resolved.
Thank you. Good to hear. Okay, I am going to call the question. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Oh, Joe, did you have further comment?
I'm sorry, just wanted to make sure, Mike, if you're still on and you can hear, did I misstate anything on that? Did I give the summary correctly as I understood it?
Yes, that's, that's correct. It never got, there was no follow-through, but I'll, I'll make sure that that happens in this case and we get it permitted correctly.
Okay, great, great. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
We're ready for a roll call vote.
Sorry, I was taking notes. Chair Boschert.
In favor.
Chair Boschert is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Colling.
In favor.
Commissioner Colling is in favor. Commissioner Zhang.
In favor.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor.
The motion passes unanimously, and the staff will follow up with the applicant and get permits and any other adjustments that need to be made. Is there any old business?
We need to move to the adoption of the bylaws.
Oh, okay, we've got another item on the agenda.
However, I'd like to request a short recess, since we had to quickly move into, from our pre-meeting into here for a bio break, and I'd like to walk our translator out, please.
Okay, very good. Let's take a 10-minute recess.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And do we need a motion to adopt planning commission bylaws or is it just discussion?
Chair Bosscher, you can do it however you want. If you want to have a discussion, this is not a public hearing, quasi-judicial or anything. It's a legislative matter.
Yeah.
It's more of an administrative matter. So if you want to have discussion first and then call for a motion at the end, that's great.
Well, we pretty much talked it to death last time we were on this subject, so I think we could entertain a motion unless someone has comments.
I have one question. On, whoa, I don't know, page 49 of the PDF, that's page 204 of the document. Special meetings, special meetings may be called by the chair and then we have in brackets with one other member. And I don't, I don't understand what that is, if that's just a question, if that's a proposed addition or what. It doesn't seem to jive with the rest of the document.
You're correct. The reason that it's in brackets is because that is a question that is being asked. And the question being asked is, should the chair have the authority to call a special meeting by himself or herself without input from anyone else? Or, and this is what I would say is more consistent with how most communities seem to do it. You know, the chair and one other member of a commission or sometimes actually here in Westminster, the mayor is authorized to call a special meeting and I believe that's charter language. It's up to the commission. You want to do that if you want to allow the chair to call a special meeting. When the chair deems it necessary, that's fine. If you want the chair to, if you want to require the chair to have one other commissioner, also agree to call a special meeting, you can do that as well. Another, other options, well, I guess the other option they already have, you know, by a majority of members at a regular meeting or a poll of all members. So the question there is, do you want to allow the chair by himself or herself to be able to call a special meeting? If you want, if that's, if you're good with that, then you can strike what's in the blank, we can strike what's in the brackets. If you would rather the chair have one other commissioner also, you know, sort of on the same team, so to speak, you can just, we would just remove the bracket and leave the language. So it's up to the commission.
That's, that's interesting because, yeah, I have strong feelings there, but I'm just like gaming, gaming this out, what, you know, now Chairman Bosscher will be here forever, but, you know, at some point he will retire.
Yep. It does seem a little odd to let the chairman call a meeting. It's, I like the wording that comes after the brackets, by a majority of members at a regular meeting or by a poll of all members. I like that wording, so. I'm, I'm not power hungry, so if you want to take that line out or add with one other member, that would spread the authority a little farther.
And if I may, there are times when for one reason or another, something comes up and it is difficult to get all the members polled. It's easy if you need to have a special, if you know ahead of time you need a special meeting and you're at a regular meeting, that's, that's fine. If you can get ahold of all the members, that's great. But there may be times when you need to call a special meeting. There are instances unlikely, but, you know, 2013, I think it was, when, you know, we were knee-deep in water everywhere around the area and, you know, there were some communities that they could not meet on their normal basis because people didn't have power or in some instances like up in Lyons, they got, their municipal building got flooded out. It was, they couldn't use it. So there are times when there may be a need for the chair or a chair plus one other member to be able to call a special meeting. And I think as Commissioner Carpenter was getting to, you know, Chair Bosscher's not going to be here forever, probably. And, you know, you do kind of want, you may, I shouldn't say you do, because this is not my decision, but you may want to have some sort of checks on that authority. So that's, that's really the purpose of that.
That makes good sense. So can we just remove the bracket and call it good?
If, if that is the commission's desire.
I, I agree with that. Second that.
Okay.
May I read that out loud to make sure we have it as we should?
You may.
So that I can make that way within this. I don't know if the commission, Greg, knows this. Once you all adopt this evening by a vote, it then, and we just discovered this, it then will have to go to council for final approval as a resolution. And we are working towards that to happen on December 12th. So fingers crossed we can all make it. When I say we, all of us, plus the missing members, I'll send out an email invite. But it will need to go to council for final approval. So I just want to make sure. Special meetings may be called by the chair with a majority of the members at a regular meeting.
We're keeping the.
Okay, that's why I wanted to, sorry.
We are.
We are keeping. Chairman and one other person.
Nope, we are changing. Well.
Okay. I understood it the way Tracy did as well. I'm glad I asked.
Yes, and well, I made that comment, but I also said that, you know, in some instances, you may want to have a check on that authority. So you add one other person instead of requiring the entire body every time to have to call a special meeting. You know, the chair and one other member of the commission.
The chair could theoretically, I mean, this is, I mean, this is insane territory, but the chair could theoretically call a meeting. Nobody shows up, they're all unexcused, goes through four, there's four unexcused absences, council kicks you off and then council has to kick you off. Yeah, it's, yeah, it is. I mean, it's a little wild, but I mean, that's the, that, that could happen. I mean, it probably won't and almost likely won't, but that's, but I think that would be a good reason to have a second member.
Right. And I've never seen that happen, but I have, I have had certain boards and commissions where I was a little concerned about, for example, how often they had special meetings because the chair could call the special meeting anytime he wanted to. And it was, it was, and I will admit, it was a little bit of self-preservation because it was using a lot of staff resources on, on days that, because typically the special meetings would occur on days that weren't the normal meeting days. And so staff is trying to scramble to make sure people are available and it can make it difficult. So what you're really doing is putting a check on the power. And it's, and it's up to you if you consider the chair and one other person to not be too burdensome. That might be a way to go. If you think that's too burdensome, you can, you can just go with just the chair.
So in charter or on paper, do we have anywhere in the municipal code that defines what a special meeting is? What criteria must be met for a special meeting?
There is language with respect to the city council. But if I, and I will take a quick look, I do not recall there actually being language regarding a special meeting, special meeting language for, let me try that again. I don't recall the code defining a special meeting, but it does refer to the potential for a special meeting of the planning commission. So it's, I think when it was probably when it was crafted, you know, there was the language in everybody's mind with respect to the city council, but I think they forgot to put it in when it came.
So isn't a special meeting, any meeting that's not a regular meeting?
Yes. So like, we've had, we've had the first Tuesday in December before, instead of waiting for the second Tuesday in December. That was technically a special.
I agree, it doesn't have a definition, but I think just by definition, special.
Okay, it's pretty hard.
Do we need to have a definition for a special?
More than what's here.
More than what's here.
I don't think we do, but that's what special means. Okay.
Unless there's a, is there a legal reason we need to have more? And then does the chair have to consult what staff to call the special meeting or can he or she just deem a special meeting without consulting staff?
The way it's currently written, regardless of which way it's done under these rules, the chair does not and the commission does not have to consult with staff. Typically though, you know, when you have the time, you're going to, you're going to make sure that staff is available. Because I will tell you from personal experience, you cannot have a meeting with, without, you know, this person over here and unless, unless one of you folks wants to write down everything and